I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April 1st, 2014 at 6:38 roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Tarrapany.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Tonight we'll have the presentation of colors and the pledge allegiance by our Boy Scout troop 48 and Cub Scout pack 48 and also following that we'll have our national anthem that will be performed by Ms. Lori Ann Leach. Will everyone stand for the invocation? Please remain standing. Heavenly Father Lord, we just come before you. We thank you for another day, a day that's set aside for recognition of one who's given her service to the city and another that's coming in that's willing to do what needs to be done so that Tarpon can be a better place. We ask that you would be with us here tonight. All of these things, we ask in your precious name. Amen. Well, I have all presentation of colors and Boy Scouts.
Telegraph attention. Group attention. Post the colors. Stand salute. Those not uniform, place your hand over your heart. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Telegraph go up face.
You may be seated. We thank Ms. Leach for that beautiful rendition of our national anthem and I'd like just to recognize some of the past city officials that's here with us tonight. We have our former mayor, Ms. Anita Protos. We have Vice Mayor Chris Alahousses, Commissioner John Tarrapany, Commissioner Jim Archer, Commissioner Norman Hill, and Commissioner Bill Vincent. We thank them for coming and being here with us this evening. First thing that we have on our agenda is one that's a little sad in a sense of knowing that Vice Mayor Slattery is not going to be here with us anymore, at least on this present commission, so we'd like to give her some things, just to let her know that we appreciate her service. The first thing is this plaque that I'm lifting up. And the plaque reads, Susan Slattery in recognition of appreciation of the dedicated devoted service as city commissioner from 2008, 9, 10, 11, and 12, and as Vice Mayor 2013, 2014, and it's from the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and me as mayor and the rest of the commissioners present this to you. Also, this, Divers, tell me what's your name on it. I'm sure that you have a few comments.
Yes, I do. Thank you. And I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening and celebrating with all of us. Well, I am. But I just want to thank the mayor for these wonderful mementos in the city. I will truly treasure them. And I wanted to congratulate, I don't know if any other candidates are here other than Raya, but I wanted to congratulate them and they did a great job campaigning and they all run a fair and a good campaign and thank you for that and wanting to serve our city. That's what means the most to us. Townsend, I want to congratulate you on running unopposed and I want you to keep up the good work for the city. You're doing a great job and it's been a pleasure working with you. It's not only been a huge honor, but a pleasure to serve the city for the past six years. I've had the pleasure to serve with some wonderful people, including both past and present boards, and I've sat with a few of you here for quite a few years and it really has been a pleasure serving with you. It's a truly unique and city with such charm and heritage and I am proud to say that I've had some part in moving this town in the right direction and I hope that this board and future boards can continue to do the same for our city. I do want to thank a few people that have helped me along the way, our city clerk Irene and our deputy clerk Michelle. Give them a hand. These two women go above and beyond every day for our city and I can't thank you both enough for everything. You do a great job. I got to thank my office assistant, our office assistant, Trish Hickey. I'm sure she's not here this evening, is she? Trish has become a very dear friend to me and she, what can I say, is she is the best. She's a wonderful person to help us when needed and I still plan on calling her weekly for our little chats. We talk a lot and like I said, we've become very good friends and I'm going to miss her a lot. But I still plan on calling, like I said, and catching up on things. And Mark, keep up the good work, but I will be watching you. You know that.
I know that.
You know that. Yeah, we've had some great conversations, but I will, you know, I'll still be in touch. And thank you for getting me here tonight, too. It was quite a feat to get here. I do want to thank our police and our fire departments. They do a great job here in our city and keeping us safe and thank you chief for make sure you pass the word along for me. I want to thank the directors on all our departments, city staff, for working so hard each day and continuing to keep our city running at its best. We truly have a great staff here at City Hall. This is a family and lately they've been doing more with less and they do a fantastic job and I can't thank them all enough. I can't forget the people that helped me get elected. Marty and Kathy, who are here this evening, they're the best, is all I can say. They're wonderful people. They work very hard and they, I think you're eight for eight when it comes to running people for the city, so thank you so much for all your hard work. I want to thank my family for supporting my decision to serve our community. It's been quite a road at home and had quite a few debates along the way. We didn't agree on everything, but thank you so much for standing by me. And I want to thank all the people behind the scenes who worked on all my campaigns, the many hours that they worked, they worked so hard for me, but most of all the residents who voted for me that had the trust in me to serve as your city commissioner. Again, it's been an honor and a pleasure and I hope someday, real soon, that I will be sitting back up here serving my community. Thank you.
Yeah, I would. Susan, I can honestly say that it's been a pleasure to serve with you. I thank you for your service to this community, but also for being a role model for someone like myself to come in and you already be elected. It was nothing short of a pleasure to serve. It was always fun sitting next to you. I think we had a lot of good laughs, you know, some off the record, which is good. And I just congratulate you and look forward to the future for you and I'm sure you'll continue to stay active in the community. I think that's something that we'd all like to see. Congratulations and cheers.
Thank you.
Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. Sue, I'd also like to thank you for your service for Tarpon Springs. It really has been a pleasure serving with you during this time. I knew you before you got elected and it was really a pleasure to then get elected and serve with you. I know that every vote you've made, every decision that you've made, you've had the best interest of Tarpon Springs in your mind and in your heart and it really has been a pleasure to serve with you. I know this isn't any kind of a goodbye. I know you're going to be, you're coming to all of our commission meetings and speaking for four minutes on each issue, right?
Four minutes?
Yeah. So I know this isn't...
Do I get extra minutes?
What's that?
Do I get extra?
Well, if you have that time donated to you, that can be worked out. But it really has been a pleasure and I congratulate you on your accomplishments and I thank you for serving the city.
Thank you.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes, Sue. I will never forget us being able to go to New York together this Thanksgiving to present the band with their award for the Macy's Day Parade and I do think you have been a good role model for a leader in our city, always hearing both sides of the issue and always serving with respect and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
And for me, I'd just say that, you know, I appreciated the opportunity I had to work with you. I think that you was always a very thoughtful commissioner, a very thoughtful Vice Mayor in trying to make decisions that you felt was best for Tarpon. I know that there's been a few hard decisions, but you always did what you thought was best and I appreciate that as someone that served with you and I can tell you, if you come, you want a few extra minutes, you know, I know you're going to have something very thoughtful to say, so I don't mind giving you that, but now if you're going to come and speak on every issue, I'm not sure about that one. But I do really appreciate your hard work and the effort in being prepared as the Vice Mayor to do what you felt like was in the best interest of the city, so I'd just say thank you. With that, we'll go... Yes, sir.
She knows it has to be coming. Susan has the right to be watchful over me for the last six years because five years and 11 months ago, she had to make one of her first decisions on this board as a brand new commissioner coming in and there was a kind of big decision of whether to have me remain from being interim city manager to city manager. And it was very obvious at that meeting, it was a two-two split and all of a sudden the brand new commissioner has to go in and make that decision. And in fact, I tell her and I kid with her, if I was stuck into that position of doing that or going out to advertise, I probably wouldn't have voted for me, but whatever it was, she had the confidence in me and she did that deciding vote five years and 11 months ago to have me remain, to go from interim city manager to city manager and I've tried to make her proud and to make her decision worthwhile, so you keep watching me because that was that third vote, so she has the right to do it and I want to thank you and we've accomplished a lot with all the commissions. We've moved Tarpon a long way and will in the future because, and again, thank you because I wouldn't be where I am without that third indeciding vote, so thank you.
You can tell them that most of the time you believe you've made a good decision.
Yeah, most of the time.
We'll go to any public comments on this item? No comments? Well, if there are no comments, then we'll go to our consent agenda, which is minutes of March 18th, regular session. Can I get a motion on this item?
I move for approval.
Second.
Any public comments on that item? Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tarrapany.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. The next we have Resolution Item 3, Resolution 2014-07, ratification of election results. Just want to read the resolution.
Resolution 2014-07, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying and confirming the results of the municipal referendum election held on March 11th, 2014, and providing an effective date hereof. That is the title of Resolution 2014-07.
Any public comments on this item? Commission comments? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Tarrapany.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. And this concludes the current board regular session adjourned, signed and die at 6:56. We'll have a short break and try to...
It should move you to me.
Quite a ride. Here, sitting.
All right, Ed, get that picture.
Eddie Cole.
Oh, that's right, the big shovel.
Oh, gee.
You stay right down, I want you to be close to it over there. The people that's talking.
I think I'm here now, huh?
Congratulations.
Good work.
Why do we give you two of them?
In case you forget your name.
I would say you could put it in your car, but not if you download the buzz dock.
I'm here for now and then. We'll see how long you're staying.
Well, no, I think it's not.
So I'll make sure I look at you a nice...
Rick says that.
Yeah, you too.
And Ed with all your stuff.
Yeah, just dropped something.
Hey, Eric.
Yes.
Can you help me carry those?
Can you hear me?
Thank you. Was that your daughter that's there?
You've done a bad...
Yeah, yeah.
I put it here about after air.
I'm better than that.
Hopefully.
Is this...
My seat first.
All right.
People that talk...
I mean, most of the country is not really...
At least that's people.
I'll tell you.
Jay, are you still got it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'll tell him, try to get the 19, try to get the...
Jay Dagman.
He was the last one, I was trying to break him, but he was farther south.
Did he give up?
No, yeah, because he was on county, he took the county road one and that wasn't working.
I don't care. Although it's funny, I've had that.
After watching meetings on TV, they thought I was the shortest of the pregnant wife. They thought, oh, who's the little guy? Well, yeah, but I'm just...
People could think I'm short, it's okay.
Anything but short.
That's what people, I've had people tell me that, that after watching meetings on TV, everyone that sits on the floor...
That's why I tried to get out of my chair.
But the thing was stuck.
That's not the right way to be.
A lot of what?
The payers are coming. All underground, it's just the payers.
It's like Christmas, that, that, and that, and just an opening up.
It's just the payers.
Today?
All underground, people are...
I don't think I got a...
You're going to like this seat a lot, I'm telling you.
Keep it warm for me.
Anita has some story in the rotation.
Yeah, myself.
I think they move around anyway, you know.
No, the chairs definitely move around. But after 2 o'clock is best.
Okay. Is it happening?
I'm looking forward to the seat. Quick exit, water cooler, freeze.
Where people holler and scream if you go here on that end and they can look around.
I spent a whole year with people that don't get on my seats.
He can still make it happen? Okay.
Yes, it was.
Not as bad as the last.
I remember we had all the lines go down, that was bad.
But yeah, it was good.
I saw him that Saturday.
Get to sit next to me, see that?
That Saturday they had...
Yeah, right, he's going to keep me in line.
Janice Miller.
How many times, you know, David or...
And he told me that it was too late.
I sent him an email, I didn't hear him back. I sent him an email. I've been looking forward to the seat. I've been looking forward to the seat.
Well, our spring break was a week, but either way, I would have tried to call. It doesn't matter.
I made somebody a long message and had to call.
They didn't call back either.
I mean, it's on you.
She's ready.
Yeah, and you just started.
I can see... Hello? Hello? Hello?
Takes both cards.
If I can have everyone start to take their seats and we'll go ahead and continue with the meeting? Thank you.
If I can have Commissioner Tarrapany come forward with his wife, Jenna? You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name. Raya Seber. Do solemnly swear affirm. Do solemnly swear affirm. That I will support. That I will support. Protect and uphold. Protect and uphold. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And of the state of Florida. And of the state of Florida. And the charter and laws. And the charter and laws. Of the City of Tarpon Springs. Of the City of Tarpon Springs. That I am duly qualified. That I am duly qualified. To hold the office. To hold the office. Of Commissioner's seat number one. Of Commissioner's seat number one. That I will faithfully perform. That I will faithfully perform. The duties of that office. The duties of that office. Which I am now about to enter. Which I am now about to enter. Congratulations. Thank you. Now, if I can have Commissioner Lex Seber and Dan, please, come forward. If I can have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Say your name. Raya Seber. Do solemnly swear affirm. Do solemnly swear affirm. That I will support. That I will support. Protect and uphold. Protect and uphold. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And of the state of Florida. And of the state of Florida. And the charter and laws. And the charter and laws. Of the City of Tarpon Springs. Of the City of Tarpon Springs. That I am duly qualified. That I am duly qualified. To hold the office. To hold the office. Of Commissioner's seat number two. Of Commissioner's seat number two. That I will faithfully perform. That I will faithfully perform. The duties of that office. The duties of that office. On which I am now about to enter. Of which I am now about to enter. Congratulations. Thank you.
the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April 1st, 2014 at 7:07 roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Tarrapany.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
The first, first item that we have is presentation, item number one, is Commissioner Seber. It's my pleasure to give you a few things, the name, badge and plate, the city seal pin, the city seal lapel pin, the city seal tie tag, not sure what you're going to do with it, I haven't been able to use it, but coat patches and of course the key to the city though. So if you would. With that, we will allow you to have some comments, if you choose, Commissioner Seber.
So many goodies. Well, thank you very much for the gifts. First, I'd like to thank Sue Slattery for her six years of service and also for all her help and support during my campaign and for being my friends. Thank you, Sue. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Terrapini on winning his second term and look forward to working with you. There are so many people to thank that helped me in my campaign, my volunteers, my employees who kept things going at my stores while I was gone, the merchants association, the Florianis, and of course, my good friends Marty and Kathy Peters who drove me all the way to the end, and the wind beneath my wings, Dan. I also want to thank the citizens of Tarpon Springs for believing in me, supporting me, and electing me to the city of Tarpon Springs. I believe in working hard and being a good listener and working together, and I promise to do that as your commissioner, to make sound decisions by doing that, that hard work and being a good listener and working with all of you, and I look forward to working with all of you to make Tarpon Springs stronger. Thank you.
You do say something for us, Commissioner Seber, now if you want to, then I'll come back to you for your own comments.
Okay. I'll wait. If you're gonna come back.
Oh, Commissioner Banther?
I want to say welcome, welcome to the board, Rhea. I think you had, you had, you had, you had, you had a hard fought campaign. I, I think you bring a lot, you bring a lot to the, 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 the table as far as your, your experience and knowledge go, and I look forward to serving with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson? Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Commissioner Seber. It's kind of fun saying Commissioner Seber, I think I was one of the first ones to say that now. I think it's kind of a cliche at this point to say, oh, the campaign was a lot of hard work, but, but the real work starts now that you're elected, but I'm gonna say it anyway. We, we've got a lot of tough decisions coming, coming our way in the very near future, and I really look forward to working with you on, on some of those tough decisions to make the city of Tarpon Springs a better place. I congratulate you on your, on your campaign and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
It's definitely a pleasure to be able to, to say to you, welcome as one of our new colleagues. I know that from my time of seeing you in action around the city, I know that you're a hard worker, that you do what you feel like is best in every given situation. I'm very hopeful that at the end of your term, you won't have any more enemies, maybe more friends that will enjoy your work here as far as your service to the city of Tarpon. I know you'll do an exemplary job, and I just say, hey, listen, I look forward to working with you, so.
Thank you.
With that, it's a couple of things that I, I need to do, and one is to recognize Commissioner Tarpani and his victory, you know, to be unopposed is something that doesn't happen every day, and it says that the people of Tarpon and as a whole believe that he's done a good job. I remember when he came on board and one of the individuals referred him as the junior commissioner, but he's never been junior on this board, he's always been an individual that didn't mind bringing his ideas and, and be persistent in doing what he felt like was best for the citizens of Tarpon, and I've enjoyed working with you and I'll enjoy my, rest of my term of working with you, and I want to welcome you aboard, and you will have this opportunity to say something about our new commissioner, but also to have some words as far as what this election has meant to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Your words are too kind. Good evening, everyone, I appreciate you coming tonight. Commissioner Seber, congratulations. Campaigning is tough, you know, people don't realize what it takes and what's involved in a campaign. You clearly had what it takes, you worked very hard, and I think everybody up here can appreciate that. I think we share a lot of the, a lot of common goals, so I'm certainly looking forward to working with you and working towards the betterment of Tarpon Springs. It's nice to, to know that, and that you're a business person in Tarpon, I think that's where a lot of our goals stem from, so I feel like we can bond together on a lot of those issues and make Tarpon Springs a better place, so congratulations to you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, first and foremost, thank my family for being here and also always supporting me in every aspect of my life and every ambition that comes to my mind that I'd like to try and fulfill. They are sometimes crazy, but nonetheless, thank you for, for your support. It's hard to believe, for me, three years ago, almost to date, standing here in the same auditorium, taking the same oath of office at a ripe age of, of 25. Looking back, that was a huge accomplishment in my life, and I couldn't have done it without every one of y'all's support and the support of the community, so thank you for that. Looking back, I'm extremely proud of my contributions to the community, my achievements, and my plans for the future. It's been nothing but a pleasure to serve on this board, and I look forward to that in the, in the three years to come. I truly believe in this community, I believe in the direction that it's headed, I feel like we are 100% on the up and up, and the community gets better every day, week, month, and year that goes by, so I'm proud to be a part of that. Looking forward, I'm excited for my second term as your commissioner, I'm honored, I will continue, as always, to do what I feel like is the, in the best interest for the community as a whole, I feel like I've always voted my conscience, and I will continue to do that. People ask me if I like the job or how it's going, and I tell people that I love the job, but the job to me is, it's easy, and it's easy because I feel like I listen well and I know a lot of people in the community, and I introduce myself and meet new people every day, and I feel like when you listen to the people of the community and you have the heartbeat of the community, it makes the job very easy, because you listen to their ideas, you listen to their thoughts, their concerns, their wants and desires, and you do what's right for the people and you do what's right for the community. So with that, I'm honored and I'm humbled to continue to serve you, and I thank you for the next three years.
I don't know if y'all have anything to say as far as Commissioner Tarpani is.
I'll just, welcome aboard for your, for your second, second term. I think one thing he brings to the table that's not recognized enough is his knowledge of land use and property and different things, and I always enjoy in the meetings, the things I wouldn't think of when reviewing a, a, a certain item, you bring a certain wealth, wealth, wealth of, wealth, wealth, wealth of knowledge about those issues, and I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you. I'd also, go ahead. I'd also just like to say congratulations, I, I think working with you, Commissioner Terrapini, has been a pleasure, and I think this board, over the last several years, has really been moving in a very positive direction, when we, even when we don't agree on things, we're able to disagree in a very friendly and cordial manner, and I look forward to continuing that. I, I really just think the city and this board is moving in a positive direction, I think you're a part of that, thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to any public comments on this item?
I told you I'm gonna get my four minutes in. Susan Slattery, 1385 South Distin Avenue. I just want to, again, congratulate Commissioner Terrapini, you did a great job, and it was an honor working with you. And I do want to congratulate my dear friend, Commissioner Rhea, and you ran a great campaign, you worked very hard, and I hope you continue the hard work as you sit up here and serve our community. I love you, and, and if you ever need any, have any questions, I'm here for you, you know that, and I do have the keys for you to get into City Hall and your pass, so, and if you need to know what doors they're for, I'm sure someone will help.
Are there any other public comments?
Christopher Bosse, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Just wanted to personally congratulate each of you, Commissioner Terrapini and Commissioner Seber. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other comments, we'll go to resolution, that's Resolution 2014-08, election of vice mayor, but before we read that resolution, we have our first decision to make, and that's who's gonna be vice mayor, normally goes to the senior most commissioner, so chair will entertain a motion. Nobody wants to make a motion for Jeff Larson?
Second.
Getting a little nervous there. Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Do we want to read the title?
We can.
You can do it either way, whichever way you.
We'll do the roll call and then we'll just.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes.
Resolution 2014-08, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, appointing Commissioner Jeff Larson, Vice Mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, and providing for an effective date hereof. It's Resolution 2014-08 by Titleoni.
Thank you very much.
Um, I had to get used to saying that, that not Vice Mayor. So, yeah. Next, we'll go to miscellaneous items, and that's. Oh, okay, well, we need, do we need another motion on that?
Move to approve the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, next is miscellaneous item number three, appointment to the general employees pension board. This board meets once every quarter unless a special meeting is needed. We have any volunteers?
I'd be happy to do it.
Unless there's another volunteer, we will need a motion to.
Motion to appoint Vice Mayor Larson to this, to this general employees pension board.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number four is appointment to the Pinellas Collaborative School Transportation Safety Committee. This committee meets the first Wednesday of every other month at 9:00 a.m., starting in May, and it meets in Clearwater.
I'd like to volunteer for that one, Mayor.
That's what I like. Can we get a motion?
So move. Second.
Any public comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number five is appointment to Pinellas County Homeless Leadership Board, and Vice Mayor Larson has served us well there, but is not gonna be able to continue to serve, so we need to have someone, hopefully volunteer.
When do they meet?
They, they meet every first Friday of the month, first meeting is Friday. You got an excuse for not going to that first one, but.
Yeah, okay.
And it meets at Sanco's Hospice, uh, conference room.
I'll be glad to do it.
Can we get a?
Move to appoint Commissioner Banther to the Pinellas County Leadership Council. Second.
Uh, any public comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes, and that concludes our agenda. We will now go to public comments on any item that was not discussed this evening. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Police chief?
I'd like to wish Commissioner Terrapini the best of success in your second term, and Commissioner Seber, I wish you the best of success in first term, I look forward to working with both of you and the rest of the commission, good luck.
Thank you.
We have our attorney was able to fight through the traffic and make it, are you having a comment?
Two hours and 15 minutes from downtown Clearwater, that's my. My congratulations to the commissioners as well, I always look forward to working with, with y'all, it's been a pleasure in my short term here to, to represent the city and to work with Commissioner Terrapini and to work with Commissioner Seber, so congratulations to you both and looking forward to it.
Good management.
Just want to offer my congratulations and be ready, the 15th, we're gonna go to work, so be ready for the 15th.
Go to work. Commissioner Lawson?
Vice Mayor Larson.
I'm gonna go to the city clerk.
I too would also like to congratulate Commissioner Terrapini for a second term and welcome aboard Commissioner Seber. I look forward to continuing working for you and with you, and I know you both do a great job.
Commissioner Banther?
I want to thank my old, my, my, my old Boy Scout troop 48 for doing the colors today, it's always a pleasure to have them, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Slattery, I know it takes me a little time to make that transition from commissioner to vice mayor, but I'll make it, and you know, to my colleague down here talked about the ripe age of 25, I'm a little riper than that. Sometime I'll forget, but.
It's no big deal at all, no big deal at all. No, I don't have much else to say at this point, I, I do want to say I hope to see everybody this weekend at the art festival at Craig Park, hopefully we'll have wonderful weather for that, thank you everybody for being here this evening.
Commissioner Tarpani?
No, I just appreciate everybody coming tonight, I see a lot of faces that are familiar, some faces that aren't, you're welcome to come to any of our meetings, and I'm ready to get to work, Mark.
Commissioner Seber?
I also want to thank everyone for coming, I see a lot of friendly faces, my fellow merchants and friends and volunteers, and I forgot to thank the fire department, I see you back there, thank you for coming, but the firefighters who endorsed me, the police department who endorsed me, and the ironworkers who endorsed me as well, thank you.
And I don't have any comments, I thank everybody for coming, and we'll adjourn this meeting at 7:27.